And say, "Good evening, everyone, fellow Toastmasters." Welcome to Division F Town Hall Meeting. As we heard earlier, the Town Hall Meetings are a new promotion in District 60, and I think it's wonderful that we get a chance for everyone to get a chance to find out more what District 60 is doing. And the Town Hall Meetings are open to anyone, but we have focus for each division, just to make sure that everyone gets a chance to find out what's going on in District 60 and learn more. I want to say also that District 60 here is to support you, as the slide shows. But we just don't support you. We support you all the way. Anything you need from District 60, please ask. We're here to support. So tonight's presentation will consist of 10 minutes of welcome and opening remarks, followed by 15 minutes of navigating the District 60 website, where there's a plethora of information that anyone from Toastmasters District 60 could use. If you have a question, don't know where to go, go to the District 60 website. Chances are, it's there. You'll have a better chance of finding it there than you will winning Lotto 649. I guarantee it. After that, 30 minutes of questions from members, and then five minutes closing remarks. So if this is a smaller group, I'm going to suggest that we can have open mic with questions. I could point to people, and let's ask a question. If they want to have a question to ask, raise your hand. If it's a larger group, if more people come in, I'm going to suggest at the end that we go through the chat first, but we'll see how it goes. Right now, it is my pleasure to introduce, and an honor to do so, our District Director, Distinguished Toastmaster, Anita Patak.
Thank you very much, David, and good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to see so many of you here this evening, and I really wish if the other people could have switched on their camera. I just want to see your face, but that's okay. That's okay. So before I start, I would like to say, we joined Toastmasters for many reasons, to improve our communication and leadership skills, or to take our communication skills to the next level, to be able to speak to hundreds of people, or a single person effectively. We invest our energy and passion by working the program. Friends, mentors volunteer to help us on our Toastmasters journey. We also have support of so many people, club members, area directors, division directors, the district. My ask to you today is to reach out to someone within your club to see if that person needs help. Now let me introduce you to your area directors, division director, and the district leadership team. So I'm going to share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So this was the agenda. And David, I'm having trouble again to move my screen. I don't know what happened. Okay. I think now it's okay. Now it works. So here are your area directors. Audrey Marinelli from F61, Karen Howe, F62, Nishant Sridharan, F63. We don't have a photo of Vijay Bang for F64, Darren Burasami from F65, and of course, your division director, Antoinette Holder. So these people, they are here, and they are going to support you all throughout your journey. If you need any help, reach out to them, and they will be very much delighted to help you. You also have the district leadership team, the district. They are here to serve you. Wendy Williamson, immediate past District Director, David Weitz, Administration Manager, Elton Brown, Public Relations Manager, Angela Ho, Club Growth Director, Andrew Mertens, Program Quality Director, and me, your District Director. So the next section of this, of tonight's event, will be how to navigate the District 60 website. I stopped sharing. Show of hands, how many times do you visit the District 60 website? How many times do you go to the District 60 website? Okay, Elton, two hands. This is the place full of resources that will help you as a member to get all materials that you need for your pathways, for contests, every single thing. And also for club officers, we do have club officer training materials, everything. It's there. It's a, it's a place full of resources, and you have to take advantage of it. So tonight, Antoinette Holder, your Division F Director, will tell us more about the District 60 website. Antoinette, all yours. You are on mute.
I wish I had $1,000 every time I heard that in a meeting. Okay, I would be rich, but somebody would capitalize on money from me today. Okay, so let me share my screen. Everyone able to see the District 60 site in all its glory? Fantastic. So thank you, everyone, for joining us today, and I'm going to take you through the District 60 site. For those of you who've never been here before, you're going to be amazed at all the information that's in here. For those of you who normally navigate in here, you're also going to be amazed, because there's still a lot of stuff in here you probably never knew was here. So right now, this is the homepage. If you click on the District 60 logo right here at the top, it will refresh, and it will take you right back here. So anytime if you select any of these headers and you kind of get lost and you want to go back to the homepage, here, this "us" button. If you click any of these, these will take you right where you need to go. If you want to find our Facebook, or even our YouTube channel, as well as LinkedIn, or even find a club, just in case you wanted to sign up for that second, third, or fifth club, this is definitely the place to go. And also, if you want to contact us. Right. The other great thing about District 60 is if you go to any of these headers, you will see the subsections underneath. So for example, about District 60, you can see that you can see the Toastmasters Promise, New to Toastmasters, Who We Are, Graphic Boundaries, Alignment 2223, because I'm sure a lot of people are interested in this. This is where we saw a lot of changes last year, where 123 came in to be, as I did not intend for that to rhyme, but it did. And then also past district leaders, just in case you wanted to know who was there just before us, and history of Toastmasters. But you will find similar headings under each and every one of these as well. Some of them are really easy to find. Some of them, you'd be like, "I'm wondering." So when it comes down to leadership, you can find all about our annual business meetings, and then you'll see our sub, our subtitle, our subsections as well. So you'll find the District 60, and DCL, and District Elections, Club Officer Training, which I know is actually one of the hot topics that everybody is fast and wants to do. Just a little word of caution, the District, Division F COTs have been set up, and they are set for the week of November 22nd. People have already started to sign up, so please come on in, and we would love to get you trained again, just to see District 60 leaders. So if we click on there, let's see who we've got. The same people that Anita had shown us before, herself, Andrew, as well as Angela, but you'll also find all the division directors as well, from A to F. And F is last, because we're fantastic. So there we go. And then you're also going to find the District, District Director Team. You'll find Elton and BB, as well as David, Sylvia, Tim, and Wendy in here, as well as Shuba, Allison, Allison, oops, sorry, I said Allison already, Emmanuel, and so on and so forth. And you'll find the entire leadership team right here under that tab. Again, if I go back to the top, and I say I want to go back to the homepage, just click District 60, it'll take you right back. Okay, so this is the one where everybody will find a lot of information, and I know that we have a lot of new members, new officers, so on and so forth. And when it comes down to pathways, we really want everybody to sign up. Right now, the, the division is not doing too bad. We are at 78% for pathways signup. So we are adoption, that's the word I'm looking for, we're at 78% adoption rate, which is fantastic, but I would love to see that jump up. So if you want, have any questions about pathways, or you want somebody to come in and train right here under Pathways, you'll find Pathways, Division Trainers. If you go in there, it will list each and every trainer that is available to come into your club and do a Pathways training, just in case you feel like you need a refresher. And so what you'll do is you'll click on the Reference Guide, and you'll find information about the trainers, or you can email the Chair, and they can also connect you with someone who can help come into your club and train. The next thing that's under here is about pathways, give you great information about pathways. If you're not able to find it on the Toastmaster site, getting started, this is also a really good place for sending some of your new members, if they're not really sure about how to really get started. And the VP said, "Hey, how about you do some reading? You can come in here and you can get started." Let's see, getting through, moving through your path, it also explains how to move through your path, and and then we can go into club quality. Under Club Quality, you'll find running, successful, hybrid club meetings. Now, I know that this is probably one of the biggest hot topics in every division and all of Toastmasters, because we have been virtual for so long, and the world is slowly opening up, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to balance both. This is a great opportunity to come in here and hear information from one of our, here's some information and thoughts from Toastmasters in regards to how to conduct a hybrid meeting for you and your club, how to conduct online meetings, distinguished program. This is one thing that I know a lot of us are going to hear about, coming closer to the end of the year, coming, let's say, we'll probably start really talking about it all about now, how to get all nine points, or even 10. I've seen some clubs hit 10 distinguished points, and this could be you. And it actually talks about how to get into, how to get your distinguished points, and how, and everything that you'll need. So education, if you get four members complete Level 1, that's a point. Two members complete Level 2, that's a point. Two members complete Level 2, that means two additional members complete Level 2. So it's a total of four. That's a point as well. Two members complete Level 3, one in Level 4, one in Level 5, or DTM is achieved, which is also obtainable for any of your members, and one more Level 4 or 5. So that means these are all opportunities for you to get a point. And I know that can be confusing when people are looking at their dashboard and saying, "Hey, I know that I've enrolled a member," or "we actually got these points." And this is how it breaks down, so that you can get full clarity on how you're going to get your points and get your DCP points, or get yourself to distinguished. Here are the other goals for Goal 7, four new members join a club. So this is great when you're doing an all, an open house. Four members join the club. And then there's also training. The training is the club officers' training. So if you get all, if you have four officers trained in round 1, as well as round 2, you will get a point. So that also goes to your DCP. And then also, when you get your payments in on time, including your memberships. So these are all the great, great information, no doubt that every club in this division will get, right? Do I show our hands? That's what we're going to get? Fantastic. I'm glad everybody's on to the program. So here's resources. You're going to find a lot of things in here. I know that people are wondering, "Hey, what do I do? What happens if I get all seven of my officers trained?" Well, guess what? You can come straight into incentives. This being offered to every member club in the division currently. So this is a great place to come in and find out how close are you, how close you are to obtaining any of your incentives. So there are certificates in here. You can get a great lovely bag that is for club leads. So if you have a lead to a new club, this is a great opportunity. All you have to do is just email CGD, Toastmaster60.com. How am I doing for time, David? You're on mute. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was having microphone problems. You're doing fine, Antoinette.
All right, fantastic. Thank you so much. All right.
I'll give you a wave when you get, when you get close.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so there's a whole bunch of other men, and so you can also get, there's a challenge for mentors, also club coaches, and also, here's the great one, Helping Hands. How many people here by show of hands have seen or heard of Helping Hands? Fantastic. For those of you who have not heard of Helping Hands, Helping Hands is a great initiative that's been set up to help struggling clubs and pair them up with clubs that are quite, that are, that are stronger. What will happen is we pair up the two clubs, and it doesn't mean that you have to change your meeting time. You can, if we compare you up with a club that meets at the exact same time as you do, so that there is no disruption to your club and the way it works. And basically, it adds opportunity to increase the, increase the fun in your meetings, changes the environment, gives you a variety of evaluations and speakers, and also increases your network. So if anyone in the division right now feels like they're struggling, and they could use another club just to meet maybe once every couple of weeks, or once every couple of months, let me know. Reach out to your area director. We'll be more than happy to connect you with a club that also is seeking to help or needs help, so that we can make sure everybody finishes, crosses the finish line coming to the end of the year. All right, we've got a lot more of in here. I can go through them all, but these are great. I encourage every officer to go in here and see which campaign or which incentives that you are going to be eligible for, or you would love to compete for. This is a great opportunity to go in here and see. We've got this one, which is Beat the Clock. I think most people tend to win this one, so. And then there's educational awards, complete an entire path, and you get this really cool pin. And I, last year, got myself the pin. I got my, got the engaging humor. So that was really cool, when it showed up nice and shiny to my home. And so I encourage that. I hope that we can send a whole bunch more to everybody this year. Okay, so we go back to the top here. We can go into programs. Now, this one is where it's pretty interesting. You see stage time in here, as well as youth leadership, speech craft, and gravel club. These are, stage time is a great place. If you are looking for a speaking opportunity, say, for example, your club always has speakers, but you want to speak a little bit more, so that you become eligible for that international speech contest that's coming up in your club in January. Great opportunity to come in here and seek opportunities to speak at other clubs. If a club wants other speakers, they can also come in here and ask for a speaker. So this is a great networking opportunity to find a speaker, as well as to speak somewhere else. I've used this. This is how I fast-tracked through two of my paths, and now I'm on my third. So this is a great opportunity and a great place to come in. If you have any members who want to, an opportunity to have variety in speaking at another club, as well as adding more variety to your own meeting. So I encourage you to come in here and sign up for speeches, or look for a speaker as well. This one is one, one tab that I come into quite often. It's about events calendar. Often enough, you're probably wondering, what is the schedule for everything, and where is everything happening? If you click on here, and you click on Event Calendar, you will see everything that is currently happening in Division, Division F. Actually, in the entire district, I correct myself here. Everything that's happening in the current district. As you can see, I'm not sure about the color coding. I, I, me being able to get in here, I'm not sure how all these colors happen, but they do. Once you put in something in the calendar, the color comes in. But you will find all of the office training. You will find workshops in here. You will find open houses for other clubs in here. And if you are having an open house, please let me know. I will be more than happy to come in here and put, put your open house in here, so that everybody in the division will be able to come and visit you, and know that you're having an open house. As you can see right now, this is the month of October. We are currently in the week of October 11th, and right here, oops. And where are we? 13th, there we go. Sorry. There we go. There's our Town Hall right there, as an example of events that do show up. And when you do click on the calendar, and you click on the entry itself, it will take you right to that page and give you all the information for that event. So anything that's currently in the calendar, that's what you'll find. Here on the right-hand side, you'll also find upcoming events, and these are all being populated because of the calendar. So anything that gets entered into the events calendar will also show up in the upcoming event. So just in case you don't want to go to the calendar, you will find this on the homepage, and every page you go into, this is the upcoming events will show up on your right-hand side. And I, also, the District 60 newsletter is right here, and the tip of the week, and different podcasts, and how to locate different clubs based on geography. And that's it for the District 60 site.
Thank you very much, Antoinette. Any questions about the website? It's time. It's your time. Ask any questions you, you want to know.
I would like to add, Antoinette, you made a amazing point. Besides being a sergeant-at-arms, also an area director, and I, I'm not sure how many area directors truly understand that when they have clubs that want to do open houses, moments of truth and that kind of thing, that they can contact you to add this to the district website, to add visibility. And I'm not quite sure that they, they sometimes get that.
I'll be sure to pass that on to the area directors. But if you do have an open house, feel free to email me, email them, or even put it into the chat. I'll be sure to collect that at the end of the meeting, and get the, and reach out and get the particulars and add that to the calendar.
And one thing I want to mention on, on the website, there is, hey, Antoinette, do you mind sharing the website one more time, please?
Sure.
Okay, at the, at the top, on your, yeah, on your right side, there is the Facebook icon, the LinkedIn icon, and there is the YouTube icon. This is where we store all of our workshops. So feel free to go and, and navigate on the, on the, on YouTube, and just pick and choose the workshop you really want to, to watch and learn from that. So every time we have a workshop, this workshop is uploaded on the YouTube channel. So this is really interesting. And of course, if you need anything, and of course, this is a search website, and you can type in anything you need, it will just give you everything, and you can pick and choose. And the new feature, like Antoinette mentioned, the Contact Us button. If tonight you don't have the chance, or forget anything, maybe you can still contact us through the Contact Us form. There is a Google form where you can have your questions, and we aim to get back to you within 24 to 48 hours. And anything else?
I'd like to add to that. Anita, my apologies. We had a, a great evaluation workshop at one of my top clubs in my area, with Karen Goodyear, in Division B. I know it's Division F, but make sure that you can see the option to, when you run these workshops, ask if you can record it and put it on the district web, website. So important. Thanks, Anita.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And anything else, any other questions about our website? Elton, is there anything you want to add regarding the website?
Yes, thank you, Anita. Yes, there are, there are a couple, there are a couple of things. One is the workshop camp, website campaign. We only have six clubs that have, are participating in it. I want you to remember that there are 10 prizes to be won, and that's $50 gift certificates from Toastmasters International. Remember, we only have six. 10 people, 10 clubs can win. Right now, the clubs that are participating are just going to just gloss right through this, and they're going to win $50. No competition whatsoever. So I'm really hoping that we can get additional clubs to join into the website campaign. For more information on that, all you need to do is go to the District 60 website, to their, our main page. Scroll down a bit, and you will see all of the information for the website campaign. We have hybrid clubs, which are, I mean, a workshop that's coming up, that's putting on, being put on by Region 6, called How to Make Hybrid Meetings Work. That is a, that's a free workshop. And if you go to any of our Facebook pages, the information is located there for you to do that. Or you can go to the District 60 calendar and check it out. It's on October 14. We had our first podcast this year, and that was with our District Director, and it was quite an interesting podcast. And so if you wish to hear it, please let me know, and I can send you the website that you can, where you can download it. And one, one more thing, and that is our open house campaign. And so five or clubs, or more, will win 25 bucks, provided that they're able to get five or more individuals to go from visitor to member. And with that, I return control back to our lovely District Director.
Thank you, Elton. And I just see our Program Quality Director, who has just joined us, Andrew Mertens. Anything special you want to tell our members about our fabulous website?
Well, I'm sure there is, but given that I missed the entire presentation, I don't want to repeat anything. So I don't, I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say. I'm sure Antoinette did a fantastic job.
She covered everything. Maybe if you want to touch on the club officer training for round one, about checking if all the, the, if all officers attended training, and about the, the first round incentive, the free path.
Okay, and, and I'm assuming Antoinette went to the Leadership tab there, and clicked on Club Officer Training Results, and you saw the 50-odd clubs there that achieved 77. So it was phenomenal. We had a lot of clubs achieve 77. I have gone out directly to the clubs where that achieved 6 of 7, because I'm wondering, hey, did we accidentally miss one somehow? To see if any actually achieved 77, because I don't want, I don't want you to miss out on a path. And I've gone to other clubs that were less than four, because I don't want to miss out on the opportunity of getting a DCP point either. And we did catch some clubs. In fact, we still have one club in play that they think they achieved 77, and they're still going to get back to me, which will make us 53 clubs. So we had 53. So you get seven, so you get a free path. And it's up to you, what do you want to do with the path? I mean, as an officer, you can claim the path, or you can gift it to a member, or you can use it for an open house event. You can say, "Hey, I have an open house." As a guest, if you join, you get a free path. It's like, that could be an incentive. All I need at the end of the day is seven names of members. You have to be a member, and seven paths, which I then submitted to TI, to Toastmasters International, and then they'll make sure that your path shows up on your educational curriculum. For round two, we actually have a very exciting, exciting incentive. It's a light that you attach to whatever device you're using. It could be your laptop, tablet, phone. So if you happen to be in an area where there isn't much light, this is almost like a spotlight. It will illuminate your face and make it easier for you to be on video. So that's going to be the incentive for round two, 7 of 7, and round two actually begins November the 1st. So we're just around the corner from that. We do have a workshop on the 18th of October, so that's this coming Monday. We do have a workshop on the eighteenth of October. So that's this coming Monday at eight o'clock and it's for train, the trainers. So if you're interested in being a trainer for round two, I highly encourage you to, to join. We're going to be talking about what should be covered in round two, because we'll make round two as interesting as round one and make sure that we cover aspects that, you know, are more relevant to being halfway through the year. So please, please do join us for that. It's, we've got, it's going to be a panel discussion. We've got four excellent, well, at least three, because I'm the fourth. Got at least three excellent presenters who will be, you know, sharing the knowledge. I see, I see a chat item there. Is that session on October the tenth? What session on October the tenth, I can't.
October tenth? There is a club officer training round two, VPPR secretary treasurer.
I, that's fascinating then. Who's doing that one?
Yeah.
I believe that was Angie, Andrew.
Andrew Hobery?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so.
That's, that, that shouldn't be in October. It's.
Maybe it's November.
I think, yeah, and chances are the date just needs to be moved.
Yes.
So yeah, good question. And yes, it's, it's, it's stated incorrectly. It should be November the tenth, I believe.
Good catch.
Because that's a Sunday.
Yeah. Nope, that's okay. So everything is on there on the website. And if you have any other questions regarding the website, please let us know. You can ask us now, or you can use the contact us feature and send us your questions. All right. Thank you for sharing the website one more time, Antonette. Thanks a lot. Okay, now it's time. It's your time. What do you have for us? What are the questions you want to ask us? We will try our best to, to reply to you.
Anita, I have another question.
Oh.
Did Antonette cover the workshop bureau section of the website? I'm, 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 I've seen the workshop bureau chair shaking her head. So Antonette, do you mind just showing that really quickly? Because this is an opportunity for clubs to bring workshops into their meetings. I get a questions around, you know, how to make spice up the meetings, et cetera. Well, there are educational opportunities in terms of act, of actually bringing in an educational workshop. The reason I'm late tonight is I was actually, I actually at Juve de Vif. There was a workshop that was taking place on evaluations. And so that just finished. So as soon as I finished, I, I joined this meeting. But if Antonette brings up under resources and it goes down, and in fact, we have the workshop bureau chair on in the town hall, maybe she would like to say a few words. Can I, can I put you on the spot, Shuber?
Well, I'll try my best. If you just scroll down and just do the dropdown on resources for main place. Well, okay, you're there already. Yes, there you are. So this page will essentially tell you, the workshop bureau provides you an array of services and what these are, and they're all listed there. And primarily that we have a whole host of workshops that are quality workshops that are available to our members. And, and these workshop presenters can be actually invited into your club. You can request this, these presentations at your club. Just send me an email through the email given on this workshop bureau page. And we will be happy to arrange a workshop at your location, meaning the club location. There's quite a whole host of club workshops to choose from. We have those that are very paramount to the district such as moments of truth workshop or the club success plan that are very, very key to the success of clubs in the district. And then you have a whole host of workshops that were actually presented at the last conference and previous conferences that are also available on district sixty TV channel on YouTube. That links have been provided here for the workshop that took place on the conference earlier this year, to the extent they were available. And also especially this year, we have put in a module of workshop training sessions. There is a separate section showing you that we actually will host workshops to train people who aspire to be presenters or workshops. There's a one hour session and there's a whole day session that Roman Smolak has offered to provide the service to the district sixty. And the important thing is we ensure that there's every workshop is vetted properly, follows certain criteria and evaluated in a way that our people who attend these workshops have a really good quality experience. So there's much there. I'm glad. Thank you so much, Andrew, for bringing it up. A lot of people miss this page, but it is really one of, I think, a prized, prized gem on district sixty's website. Because it is a truly an educational resource that empowers the speakers at the level of speaking, at the level of the club, in creating a wonderful environment for their own learning, at the level of leadership. And as well as some very key professional skills that they can learn from these workshops. So it's really a whole host of activities that really broaden your perspective and make you somewhat better prepared to really live a fuller life where you can achieve your goals in multi-dimensional ways. Thank you so much, Andrew. Back to you.
Well, well said, Shuber. And Antonette, if you keep scrolling down, because you probably, as you can see on the right, you're just, you're just touching upon the, the plethora of different workshops within that. So you've reached, you've reached the workshop library section. So if you just keep going down, it'll just give you an indication of some of the, the topics that are available, available there. But well said, Shuber. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Shuba. Sorry, my throat never helps me. I always have to warm up my throat. All right. So this was all about our website. Again, please view the contact us feature if you have any questions at any time. Do you have any other questions? How is it going in your club? Are there any challenges, anything? You, you want to tell us, anything you want to ask us?
Hi, this is Melanie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Melanie.
Um, I was curious, it was, it might be a website related question. Are the international speech contests and winners speeches? Are, are those also available somehow? Because I, I usually just search for them myself on YouTube, but I was wondering if there's a quicker way to get some of them.
Ah, good question. I'm just trying to remember when I was program quality director last year, what did we do with the speech contest? And I know we have Joan Von Zuben, who was our contest chair last year. Please, Joan, can you just refresh my memory? Did we? Did we record? Yeah, we did record the speeches, but I can't remember if they are on the YouTube.
I believe we got approval from all of the speakers to put their speeches on YouTube channel.
Thank you. So yes, thank you. You're a lifesaver, Joan, always.
So just to be clear, that would be accessible through the YouTube icon you showed us in the top right corner?
Yes.
Terrific. That's great. Thank you.
So it is on the website as well. So Antonette's, given it's still sharing, you want to go back up to the top and go into. Various reasons, but on, on the website itself, you, you do have access to some of the speeches. And as Joanne and Anita said, it's also on the YouTube.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else, any other questions?
Anita, I have a question.
Yes, Michael.
And I'd like to direct this to Elton, whom I have so much respect for. In moments of truth, the very first part is first impression. El, if he could maybe tell us how important with all the moving parts that we have in Toastmasters, that first impressions matters.
Wow, this is like table topics on steroids. It is really, really, really important that we create a, an environment that is impressionable. Especially now that we're using Zoom or Google Meet. Our way of doing things are magnified times a hundred percent. It's like you, everything is being seen through a magnifying glass. So it's important that our meetings run smooth. That they are educational, that they are entertaining, that they actually pull individuals into the, the meeting. I, I've heard in the past where individuals have said, oh, you know, it's so sterile and you know, it's, it's just a bunch of electrons being bounced against one another. But there are ways to make sure that your meetings are impressionable. And one of them is, is finding ways to keep your meetings as interactive as possible. So like cashing in on table topics and making sure that they're extremely interesting and engaging and you don't run out of ideas for table, for table topics. There are thousands of suggestions that you can find via the Google by just typing in table topics. Believe me, hundreds of these ideas come up to help you continue to keep your, that part of your meeting fresh. You want to make sure that your groups are clubs are being creative at their meetings and not allowing their meetings to become stagnant. And when I say stagnant, I mean, I, I can sit in a meeting and just have one eye open. And kind of doze off a bit and wake up and know exactly where the meeting is. The meeting is boring. Need to find a way to switch it around. I think I mentioned this before, where you can actually take your meetings and turn, turn it up, upside down. So in other words, so you have a backwards meeting. And believe me, you talk about having to pay attention to that. You definitely do, because everything is, is, is more as backwards. And, and it's also fun and it's memorable and you get people laughing. So there's this emotional connection that's coming across a electronic connection, which is really what keeps you having a meeting that is engaging. One that puts on an excellent presentation, which put, gives your club an excellent. What's the word? Forgot the word now. Oh my God. An, an impressionable meeting. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Elton. And questions for us? Anything? Yes, Victoria?
Well, thank you for having this, this town hall meeting. I, I thought I would come to it with a very modest request. I'm new to the position of VPPR at, at my club. And we're thinking about how to publicize the open house that we're holding on October twenty second. And we've, we've had a little subcommittee. We've thought of the, the little prizes, the raffle we're going to have, the paths that will be offered to the members coming in. But I'm, I'm just thinking, are there other ways? Oh, and obviously we should have it listed on the division sixty calendar, because that's a real go-to site I see, thanks to the, the tour we've had of, of the, the calendar. Another way to publicize it will be sending our flyer, which has a link to the Eventbrite page to sign up. We'll be sending that to all our members. We're an advanced club and they'll be sending it to their home club people and any other people that they might think. But is there any other way to, to publicize it that, that you can think of?
Elton.
Yes, on the, on the district sixty website, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but it's, I think it's under resources. And under resources, there is a, a link where we have about eighteen different platforms that can be used to help you get the word out about your, your club. There is also something called prlog.com. And this is where you're able to present your, an announcement that can be spread across various newspapers across the country. Even some papers will pick it up that are, that are in the United States. So there are many, many avenues that are available to you as a, as a club, area or division to promote your events, your events.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, you're so quiet. Come on.
I have a question.
Yes.
Am I allowed another question, district director?
Oh, of course, ask as many as you.
Out of curiosity, and many, many people have the video off, so they'll have to do the reaction in terms of raising their hand. How many people have done a, how many clubs have done their moments of truth? Okay. All the people who don't have the video on, anybody? Okay. So, so this is an excellent session actually for a club meeting to do moments of truth, because it, you discover what your club is doing well. And what your club could be doing differently to make it even a better memorable speak, meeting experience when, when, when all the members get together. And it just so happens that we have a very experienced moments of truth facilitator on this call who would love to come in and, and facilitate moments of truth. I, I hope I'm not I, I hope you agree with me, Joanne, because it's Joanne that I'm referring to. So if, if you, if you want to consider doing a moments of truth for one of your meetings, please, please do so, because you know, it, it'll, it'll take the length of the meeting and you'll, you'll, you'll walk away knowing now what your club can be doing differently to make the meetings even more impactful. But at the same time, you know, you also celebrate what you do well. So you know, please do consider that. And, and Joanne is on the call. She's a moments of truth facilitator. I'm sure Antonette went through that on the website in terms of showing where the moments of truth was and we have three facilitators for her that you can bring in. And she's smiling, so I have no idea whether she did or not. But it's okay.
All right. And I, something just came to my mind and I, and I forgot what I wanted to let you do. Yeah, I have a question for you. How many of you read the monthly newsletter? The district sixty monthly newsletter? Okay, Victor, kind of, yeah. So Elton, would you like to tell them more about the newsletter? If you don't mind?
The newsletter, the gavel, is for you. It is so that you're able to go to one electronic location. And to be able to gather as much of the goings on in our district in one place. By the way, this newsletter is portable. You can download it in PDF and take it anywhere you, you wish, if that's what's needed. We have information about the, about the clubs, area, division, and information from the, the trio. In terms of what's going on in the following month. So for an example, we're going to release a, the gavel newsletter, which is usually the last week of each month. And it's for the month ahead. So we're going to release the October newsletter, but the information in it is going to be all about what's going on in November. So this is one place you can also go to just catch up, find out exactly what's going on, who's doing what, who's won awards. By the way, finding pictures of yourselves, members of clubs, club shots. By the way, if you happen to have any, any photographs of your of your open houses, it would be great if you can send me them. And I know it's probably, it probably will be the screenshots from this, from your Zoom meeting. That's, that's just fine and dandy. Just send them with, to me with a little caption so that I know exactly who, who they came from and date and time that the event happened. And that not only goes for open houses events, that also goes for your club meetings. I'm not saying that all of them. meetings. I'm not saying that all of them would be in, in the, in the newsletter. I think that would probably triple the size of it. But I can definitely set up a page where all of that information is there to be seen by, by the district. If you happen to have any achievements that your clubs have made, that would also something that would be great for me to know about and see if I can, if I can get them into the newsletter for all of the district to see and be inspired. Back to you, Madam District Director.
Thank you very much, Elton. Victoria, earlier you were asking about promoting your open house. Another idea is to promote your open house on our social media platforms. I'm talking about our District Sixty Facebook, District Sixty LinkedIn. Because Facebook, it's not only members in the district who will be looking at the post. It's open, it's public. So whoever wants to go, whoever is looking for a club, they will fall on, on your open house. LinkedIn, it's for professionals. We all know that. And in my opinion, these are the two best places for you to promote your open house.
Thank you for the suggestion, Anita. Do you mean I would go to the districts, I would go into the District Sixty's social media site to do that?
Yes, you can do that. And also just to let you know, if we do have club executives on the call today, we have dedicated pages for each single executive, VPPR, BPA. All the seven roles are there. So if you guys want to join the, your, your respective role page, and this is a perfect place for you to chit chat among yourselves, ask questions, ask help, and this is, this is a good place, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I can't believe it's almost ten past eight. Okay. Okay, there is something in the chat. Melanie has I think the chat is incomplete.
Oh, I raised my hand. Sorry, it was Melanie asking another question.
Sorry, Melanie, I didn't see you. Yeah, please do. Yeah.
Okay. We have a lot of newer members who are very shy to do speech evaluations. Is there anything to help train them to be a little bit more confident to take those roles on? Because I'm sure they feel like they don't know what to, to provide as help, because they're learning themselves. So is there a way we can help with that?
That's a great question, Melanie, and I will ask Andrew to take care of that.
Melanie, it just so happens in the Workshop Bureau, if you go to the Workshop Bureau on the district website under resources, in the library, you're going to find a couple of presenters who actually do workshop evaluation workshops. And I think it'd be an excellent idea to, for when you're meeting, is to bring in one of the presenters who can do the evaluation workshop and make, and then help your members to become more comfortable in terms of providing those, those evaluations.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll check into that.
We have five more minutes. Yes, Beverly?
I believe you'll find in every single path, there's always also the evaluation and feedback module, which gives you each person, it's, it's what, level one, level two? So there is that training on giving evaluations. It's a good one.
Thank you for sharing that. Jamie has re, okay, Jamie, do you have any questions?
Hi, Jamie. Thanks for running this open house, or not the open house. Sorry, lost for words. In relation to Instagram, my club is also holding an open house. How exactly do I advertise it on, let's say, Instagram? How do I gain access to that? I'm not too sure how that works.
Elton, will, will you take that question? Do we have anything to do with Instagram?
Or like Facebook?
Oh, yeah, we do have a Facebook account. The district has a Facebook account. You can send a request to join the Facebook page and it will be yours and you can post all your events regarding your open houses, anything happening at your club, please share with the members. And you can even join the District Sixty LinkedIn account as well. From which club you belong to, Jamie, can I may ask?
The Bay Street Breakfast in Toronto downtown.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Jamie, if you, if you have any, any questions about any of this, you can definitely reach me at, using my email address, which is prm@toastmaster60.com.
Thank you.
And that goes for everybody, whoever have any type of promotional questions, anything to, or if there are any vice president, public relation officers, if you have any questions about the role or something that you would like to do, please get in contact with me using my email address, prm@toastmaster60.com.
Yeah. And even if you missed the address, you can go to the contact us feature on the website and just have your questions there. All right. Any more question? Eight, twelve? Okay. Jamie, do you have another question? I see your hand is still up in here.
No, I forgot to lower it, but thank you so much for answering my question. I appreciate it.
Anytime. Thank you. Okay, eight, twelve, and this is our last town hall meeting. Division F, fantastic, fabulous. What else did I say, Antonette? Fantastic, fabulous. Everything friendly, very friendly and fun. Fun, yes. I hear you go fun. We learn best in moments of enjoyment like our founder, Dr. Ralph Medley, has said. And we are looking to have more town hall meetings next year. This was the very first one that the district has organized, because we wanted to reach out to our members, know their challenges, just, just get to know them. This is kind of a, you know, just a chit chat and talk to you, you talk to us, because unfortunately, we are not in person, but thanks to Zoom, we can see all of you here. I mean, some of you not, but still, you are there. I can see the name and I can, I can still see you. But thank you very much. And yeah, remember, go to that new member in your club and check with them. Do they need any help? This was my ask to you, because just remember, when you first joined Toastmasters, I'm pretty, pretty sure someone came to you and asked you, do you need help? How about doing it now to, to, for our new members? And of course, we are all working on our goals and we have set a date to achieve those goals. And again, maybe many of you have been on the call like for several times. Know my favorite quote, achieving our goals is not an act on a single day. It's a habit. It's a practice. Thank you very much, everyone. Please use the contact us feature and send us your question. We want to help you. We want to, to, to get to know you more and help our members, help our clubs. And we will support you always. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.